Thank you. We're calling the meeting to order at 3:30. Our fellow board members are on their way, but this way we can recuse ourselves into closed and be on a timely manner. Roll call, please, Rosie.
Trustee Barto. Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Anderson. Trustee Orsoilu. Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
And for members of the public that are looking at this because you have nothing else to do, four is a quorum. So there we are. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto. Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson. Trustee Orsoilu. Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
All righty. Seeing no one in our public that has a question, we are going to move into closed session. The items are 5A Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Employment, number 2022206 HR Conference with Legal Counsel on Anticipated Litigation, and a second one with case number 4029260-22.23, and another conference with Labor Negotiator, and a Public Employee Dismissal Discipline Release Employment. And we will return to open session at 6:00 PM.
So we are calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We have opening ceremonies, moment of reflection, pledge of allegiance, led by our student board member.
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resolution regarding employment number 202206 HR. The vote was as follows: six ayes, one absent. Move to adoption of the minutes 9:13:22. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Crane and seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Right. Now we move to student board member reports. Trustee Metoyer.
Yes. As you will know, we rotate our board members. Today Daniela Ramirez is our board member on the dais. So Daniela, will you start us off with your report, please?
Of course.
Just make the little pointy end, point to your mouth, and it'll all be great.
Good day to all, and a big hello to my fellow student representatives, local authorities, and the public, also the board. Today I am the roll caller for this meeting. I would like to jump into my response immediately to give others their time. To quote my topic verbatim, what college and career activities and events are taking place on campus that are helping seniors prepare for next year? I represent Back Bay for any newcomers or those who just were not aware. I've spoken with the Back Bay High School principal, Dr. Bauer Meister, to get the most accurate response to this question. And we discussed students receiving mentors, junior college trips, junior college classes, and resume creation help, and also Career Day. To go into detail, Back Bay High School will work to partner its pupils with mentors that correspond with the student's career choice. For example, if the student's desired career is to be a mechanic, therefore the mentor provided would either have worked, or is currently working, or has appropriate amount of experience and knowledge with mechanics. The goal is for the students to enter their field with a more realistic approach. Students can use this opportunity to ask questions that you cannot more specifically than you could any textbook or online research. To accompany this, we would also do college trips. This is to expose students to the college's culture, the dynamics that happen on a day-to-day basis, and it would also give students a feel of the campus and how each space is used by the students currently attending. Our guiding college campuses also serves for inspiration and motivation for the students at Back Bay, so then they can find staff members who they relate to, and they can become familiar instead of going there the first day and not knowing anybody. Seniors will also receive junior college classes. They will get applied into the school system as if they were any other student, and they will get a student ID, and they will get registered into a class of their choice, whether that be a career or just temporary help for job placement. Then we have Career Day. Career Day is simply where a bunch of different job advisors come to Back Bay High School themselves. This includes military, this includes colleges also, one being Golden West College. This also includes different subjects. And they give resources to the students at Back Bay in how to apply and get into these programs, and how it is to actually work there, and the different branches of the military, and the different ways you can use the benefits that they give you. I would also like to note that having college advisors come and actually speak to the students and give them like a detailed version of what they're actually receiving gives the students a better chance at choosing a career and a major that they will fulfill for a longer period of time instead of switching into another major within the first two years. Also, starting January and continuing three months into the return break from the holidays, we will commence resume building, which is just telling students what will and will not benefit to getting jobs, and also what to put on resumes, and how to ask for references, and also how to properly... How to ask... Oh, that was a little too close. It would help students not be stressed by resumes when looking for a job is already stressful enough.
That's right. That's true.
All of these combined help Back Bay students learn how to navigate the first two years after high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty. Our two students that get... Because we don't have enough seats up on the dais. I see Marcelina. Is Isabella here? I don't see her yet. Okay. Marcelina, you're up.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith and members of the board. I'm Marcelina Sanchez, representative of Early College High School. From the start of the school year in August at Early College High School, there has been a representative from Girls Inc. that comes to talk to our senior girls about opportunities they can take with their organization, anywhere from volunteer opportunities and any scholarships they can apply for. The school has also had senior meetings where they discuss various activities and see how the school year is going and how to apply for different jobs or anything, or college, especially because that can be very stressful. Their upcoming senior meeting will be October 13th. Lastly, the seniors are preparing for CASC, which is a day where seniors can apply for college, and especially with the help of our counselor, Ms. Gullini. We also have college field trips for the seniors so they can see what schools they may potentially want to be applying for, and have college and career nights with local organizations. I'm glad to see that our seniors are taking a leap into new opportunities that will definitely benefit their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, student board members. Just as an FYI, also note that we also have our virtual college and career night, so you can tack that onto the list of opportunities that you have. President Barto.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the Harbor Council PTA report. Cynthia Strassman.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Barto, trustees, board members, special guests, and community. It's a pleasure to be here representing Harbor Council PTA. I just have a few tidbits to share with you tonight. We have a couple events that will take place this month. The first one being our Walk to School, and that's taking place... There are two dates that are being offered, depending on which state... You know, it's dependent on the school selecting that date. It's October 5th and the 12th. Great opportunity for making connections with the students and their families. It's all about safety, and it's also great for learning, right? You start off on the right kind of right frame of mind. You're exercising, walking to school, so we're really excited that this is available again this year. So that is coming up. We have 13 schools within our Newport Mesa School District participating. I'd like just to mention them briefly. That is Victoria, Sonora, Anderson, Kellybrook, Lincoln, Mariners, Newport Elementary, Polerino, Pomona, Ray, Woodier, Wilson, and Newport Heights. So we're also looking forward to seeing those pictures coming our way after the events. Our second event that's taking place this month is our School Board Candidate Forum, which is going to be taking place on Monday, October 10th, at Back Bay Montevista High School. This is going to be... This was organized by Harbor Council but moderated by the 4th District PTA. We currently have 10 candidates, nine of which have responded, and one hasn't responded is Barbara George. But we are looking forward to hosting this forum, and we encourage all to attend. And again, it's on October 10th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Back Bay Montevista High School. And last but not least, within our council, our membership... I know that we comment on this every month, but our membership is gaining. We're now over 5,000. And within the 4th District PTA, which is the largest district PTA in the nation, we have 36,000 members to date, and this is just October. So for those who don't know, with PTA, our membership actually supports our advocacy efforts, not just at the local level but also at the state level. So having a strong membership truly does support advocacy efforts at the legislative level. So that is all on my report.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank superintendent, the school board, and the school district for supporting Harbor Council PTA with all that comes when we meet on a monthly basis with all the questions that are presented, and you know, our leaders are seeking answers, and zone-specific answers, correct? And we're just appreciative that you're there to support us and guide us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have CSCA and NMFT comments. So we have CSCA VP Stu Tedford.
Good evening, folks. President Barto, trustees, Wesley, and my cabinet friends. I need to let you know that I'm no longer the vice president. I'm going to be the president's on Friday. So I wanted to let you know, my name's Stu Tedford. I work in the lock shop. I've been with Newport Mesa about 18 years. I worked for LA Unified for 15 years before that. I've been a union member since the day I joined LA Unified and been active in the union representation of my coworkers for about 34 years now. I think it's important that we build relationships with everybody, all of the stakeholders, but a big part of it is the relationship that I have with our Human Resources Department, the Superintendent's Office, and really everybody who serves the students, which is why we're all here. The Maintenance Department works really hard to make sure that everything is ready when the kids show up, and I know that getting them to school is important, and the food's important. So I firmly believe that all of us play a part in how the kids are educated, and if we all put them at the forefront of what we do, then everyone in Newport Mesa will be successful. And I found it to be true in my experiences so far. So if you ever need anything from the lock shop, I'm right across the parking lot. If you need anything from CSCA, any questions, any input on anything's going on, please feel free to reach out to me. Everybody knows how to get ahold of me. I'm generally walking across the parking lot, and you can just stop me anytime and say hello. But I just wanted to say thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk to you tonight, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And NMFT Representative Tamara Fairbanks.
Good evening, President Barto, Superintendent Smith, honored trustees and guests. The beginning of the school year marks a time of excitement, stress, new discoveries, and innovation. As an NMFT Executive Board Member and Arts Advocate, I am in a unique position to see the wonderful creative activities that are happening in our schools. Not only are our certificated staff dedicated to the academic learning of our students, but our staff are also dedicated to growing our students creatively and artistically in the arts. The past few weeks, our dance teachers have paved the way for our performing arts season with a performance at Costa Mesa High School, followed by a collaboration through one of our arts partners, Back House Dance, where the students learned the art of choreography, the science of sound, and the methodology of moving in order to express an idea. This integration of concepts is why it's so important to support Prop 28. For those who don't know, Prop 28, the Music and Arts Funding Initiative, is on the ballot for November. Instead of adding taxes to support the arts, the initiative dedicates approximately 1% from the general budget to fund... To have an ongoing funding for the arts. This funding will not only aid in dedicated funding sources for arts education, but will provide equity for those schools who need more opportunities artistically. I ask you, school board, for your support for Prop 28 to make sure that every child, every day, TK through 12, has access to programs that are rich in music, art, drama, and dance. As a person who came from a rich arts upbringing, where every elementary school had a full-time art teacher and music teacher, it would be great for Newport Mesa to offer a similar richness in our district in our own way. Thank you for your continuing support of our teachers in the arts, and your support for the arts. I hope you give this measure your deep consideration and support, and thank you so much for everything. And I love this microphone. I just had to add that because I'm just in love with this. Thank you.
We move to community input on non-agendized items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
All right. We have several comments, but it looks like we have enough for everyone to get their say. So that is great. Alex Goodman first, then Matt Armstrong, then Gwen Galor.
President Barto, Superintendent Smith, members of the board, my name is Alex Goodman. I've been an English teacher at Newport Harbor High School for the past nine years, and I'm speaking tonight to address two issues: the recent attacks from a group called Newport Mesa Uncensored, and the importance of continued support for inclusive schools. For the last month, the first item on the Newport Mesa Uncensored Instagram account has been an album accusing me and several of my colleagues of being sexual groomers. Their justification for this dangerous harassment targets our school's efforts to become more inclusive, especially with regards to LGBTQ students. I'm deeply concerned about their actions because these personal and dehumanizing attacks are going to be used to fuel bullying and discrimination, and it's likely that other educators will avoid participating in inclusion efforts for fear of being targeted. Last week, the group also published an op-ed in the Daily Pilot presenting themselves as concerned parents whose top priority is the district's test scores. The authors cherry picked a couple of statistics from one year of one standardized test, then they concluded without evidence that Newport Mesa is failing because it only cares about promoting state-backed ideological programs. Not only is this inaccurate and politically motivated, they don't even try to address the actual challenges our students have faced over the last few years. They also don't bother to explain how providing more support to students could possibly make their academic performance worse. I don't know this group's specific motivations, but their efforts seem focused on removing resources for LGBTQ students, which could force them back into the closet and threaten their safety. The group has also been asking to ban books and censor vital topics of discussion. The reality is, when students are ostracized, or stereotyped, or feel like they need to hide their true selves, these obstacles make it really difficult to do well in school. So yes, as educators, we do work as hard as we can to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic, and at the same time, we offer our students care and support and resources when they need them. Recently, Newport Harbor students got to share their thoughts in an optional survey, and I was encouraged to see comments like this one: "The school has been doing an exemplary job at providing for the students." But then I'd see another one like this: "I loathe many of my classes merely because I can't have an actual learning experience due to being recorded by students, laughed at when I answer a question, or being plainly excluded and judged by other students for my gender identity." In the end, I think this student summed it up best: "School is overall pretty good. The push for inclusivity is positive, but there is still more that needs to be done. I am grateful to be in a district that recognizes that students are not numbers, they're human beings. Inclusion is not a distraction. It is the only way we'll ever build a society that truly welcomes all of us. Please, let's keep working together to make sure that every Newport Mesa student feels safe and respected in a place where they can learn and grow and thrive." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Armstrong.
President Barto, Superintendent Smith, and trustees of the board, thank you for your service. After the last board meeting, I sat down for a long talk with the people behind Newport Mesa Uncensored. Despite some initial tension, after 45 minutes, the vibe was positive. We were making progress. Speaking with one another was cathartic. At the end, we agreed to continue the discussion, but with more teachers. For this meeting of the minds, I assembled a dream team of educators who could speak to their many concerns. To ensure a productive exchange, I made two requests of Newport Mesa Uncensored. One, that we maintain confidentiality to ensure candor, a standard arrangement in any mediation. And two, that we stop calling each other names. They refused to agree to confidentiality, offering a vague concession that would not provide protection for my colleagues. Bill Dunlap suggested that he and I meet separately, and for obvious reasons, I passed. As for putting an end to the name-calling, there was no response. The lesson here is clear: these people are more interested in virtue signaling than in learning or understanding, and they certainly don't care about our schools. For them, truth is beside the point, and facts are not their currency. Their campaign against our schools is pure performative politics. You see, they don't really consider the humans on the other end of their attacks. For example, they were outraged at being called extremists. They felt it was so unfair, and the irony was utterly lost on them. I had to explain that calling teachers groomers is also unfair. Grace Hobbs was upset that I had named her in an email to teachers, arguing that if her child were enrolled in an NMUSD school, she may have been embarrassed. Yet Grace Hobbs is perfectly comfortable publicly labeling Newport Harbor's principal a groomer, and his child actually does go to NHHS. Meanwhile, Bill Dunlap's response to being called an extremist was to wear a clown suit and try to crack a joke. And I've got news for Bill Dunlap: harassing teachers is not funny. For over a year, our teachers, administrators, and trustees have been enduring attacks from this loud minority. We still show up every day and serve our community. Compare this to Newport Mesa Uncensored. For one day, they face pushback. For one day, they're called a name, and they couldn't handle it. Their performance at this last meeting was a case study in fragility. Only Haley Jenkins doubled down on casting a librarian as a groomer, so she earned the gold star for reckless disregard for the truth, the legal standard that in any other context would get her fired or charged with a misdemeanor and fined. In my daily pilot op-ed last May, I predicted that these people would start calling us groomers. Such predictable reckless people should not be guiding educational policy. Unfollow. Unsubscribe. Unlike. Thank you.
Next, we have Gwen Galor.
Superintendent Smith, President Barto, and members of the board, thank you sincerely for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Gwen Galor, and I teach English at Newport Harbor High School. This is my seventh year at Harbor, but I've been a sailor much longer than that. I graduated from the school in 2010, and before that, I was an alum of Enson Intermediate, Kaiser Elementary, and Woodland Primary Schools. My mother is a beloved elementary school teacher in the district, and my grandfather graduated from NHHS back in 1950. Essentially, my family is Harbor Zone, born and bred, and I feel lucky to be part of a longstanding tradition of academic integrity and excellence. While employed at Newport Harbor, I have held a wide array of responsibilities. I've coached cross-country. I've been the co-chair of the school's Inclusion Council. I've hosted weekly Bible studies in my classroom, and I've been the advisor of clubs such as Prism, which is led by students within the LGBTQ+ community, the Blaze It Forward Club, which is led by Jewish students to honor the legacy of a local teenager murdered in 2018 for being Jewish and gay, and the Kindness Club, to name a few. At the beginning of each year, I tell my students that if they are conscientious, inquisitive, and kind, they will find success in my class. It is essential to be both intellectually curious and socially engaged in order to become a lifelong learner. Indeed, as the commentary published in the Daily Pilot last Wednesday maintains, quote, "The purpose of education has always been to instill good character, convey an understanding of America's underpinnings, and provide training in the practical competencies such as reading, writing, and arithmetic." The skills we are helping our students develop in reading, writing, and arithmetic, as well as in government, the arts, foreign languages, and economics, are critical to their matriculation as learned adults. But surely, we don't measure a student's worth solely by their ability to pass a single test. For what is paramount is a student's ability to, as the authors of the Newport Mesa Uncensored editorial will certainly agree, demonstrate good character. And one cannot develop this good character, ethics, morality, and kindness without being encouraged to recognize, affirm, and appreciate all aspects of their neighbor's identities, be these racial, ethnic, religious, or those related to gender and sexual orientation. We seem to be hearing the refrain of parental choice repeated at every turn these days. It is crucial to remember that making the choice to ignore and dehumanize the authentic identities of those around us only diminishes our shared humanity. Let us not conflate introducing our students to ideologies awaiting them in the world with proselytizing, and let us never shy away from protecting and celebrating the most vulnerable communities because of fear and intolerance. Hopefully, we choose to educate ourselves so that we can spot the difference. Thank you greatly for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Lynn Gaddis, then Kate Malouf, then Mafik Ari.
President Barto, Superintendent Smith, and the trustees of the board, thank you for giving me the time this evening. My name is Mary Lynn Gaddis, and my husband and I have four children, each of whom graduated from Newport Harbor. In these combined 16 years of high school, our experience with Newport Harbor High School was overwhelmingly positive. As I have followed the attacks on our neighborhood schools, I've grown increasingly disheartened, and I finally reached the point where I felt I had to speak out. So let me say loud and clear: those who attack our teachers, our schools, and our principals, and the board do not represent me, and I resent their implication that they are the only ones paying attention to what's happening in our community schools. This handful of parents think... This handful of parents thinks that in a district of 17,000 students and 34,000 parents, only they, the select few, have the inside scoop of what's really happening here in our schools. Please, spare us your petty grievances and trumped-up outrage. You do not speak for the Newport Beach that I know. I have served as a member of the Junior Mentor Program since its inception over two decades ago. During this time, I've worked closely with the number of delightful, talented Newport Harbor students. As a parent, I and my husband were involved in many programs, including football, field hockey, track, drama, and in addition, we had very strong partnerships with our IEP teams. Meanwhile, my husband Alan, Newport Harbor Class of 1980, has served on the Board of the Newport Harbor Alumni Association as president from 2018 to 2022, and currently as the Chair of Engagement and President Emeritus. From 2011 to 2016, he helped establish the Long Gray Line, the Newport Harbor Football Alumni Association. Just Friday night, many alumni were shocked at what has been said recently in the public domain regarding their alma mater. When do you think about the folks that waging war on our schools and teachers? You must ask yourself, what have these people ever actually built? You have to ask yourself, what kind of person posts the names of our local teachers, our principals, on a list of pedophiles? This is just not acceptable. I for one stand with the teachers and the leaders of Newport Harbor and Newport Mesa Unified School District against those who target our schools. And I can say with confidence that I speak for far more of the community than anyone affiliated with the social media group Newport Mesa Uncensored. When I first heard about this group, I thought honestly it was an exaggeration until I signed up and read it myself. I urge you to dismiss the words that comes out of their mouths and what they publish publicly. It's unfair, and it's un-American. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have Kate Malouf, and then Mafik Ari.
Good evening. My name is Kate Malouf, and I am a conservative Christian mother of three children that have, excuse me, attended this school district since kindergarten, and our family thanks you. Thank you to the board, the superintendent, and the administration at our school, Newport Harbor High School. Lately, I have read misrepresentations made about you, the district, and the staff at my children's high school. I stand here tonight as a very involved parent at Newport Harbor, who rejects the misrepresentation of our school. I don't accept the condemnation of our school built on false narratives spewed at our community. My children and their peers have been very well-educated through an unprecedented time in our world's history, and we are grateful for it. Can we strive to do better and evaluate how we do things? Absolutely. But each of you knows this and strives for this because you stepped up and you put yourself out there to be elected to do better for the 18,000-plus children in this school district, and I am grateful. All three of my children persevered through the pandemic due to the outstanding education and support they received from their teachers at Newport Harbor. Our oldest daughter graduated last June with honors, and she would be the first to tell you that Newport Harbor thus far has been the best experience of her life academically, athletically, and socially. Our son is a senior this year, and he will graduate from Harbor in June. Despite his difficulty of enduring math behind a screen during the pandemic, a teacher, his math teacher, made all the difference in finding creative ways to help him increase his time in the classroom. She cared enough to reach out and find solutions. Our youngest is a sophomore this year, and she spent most of her middle school at Ensign behind a screen, but somehow came prepared to Newport Harbor, and last year finished with straight A's and 1B. We choose to send our children to the public schools because of their stellar reputation, and they have served our children well. Newport Harbor has the best school spirit frankly I've ever seen. Coming out of the pandemic, we have achieved nine CIF titles and watched these kids and their teachers celebrate each other. They have been able to do this because of your leadership and because of our beloved leadership of Principal Dr. Sean Bolton. To those who want to tear us all down, go cast your stones somewhere else. Our kids know the truth. They walk the halls, they play on the courts, they sing and dance in the theaters, and they have a front-row seat to the sensationalized desire to destroy our school district. We need more kindness and love, and less bitterness and hate. I'm betting on kindness for the long haul. Thank you.
Yeah. Mafik Ari, and then Justin Shea.
How do I start this? I've never done this before.
When you start talking, they'll start your chat.
Sweet, thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for just being here, you guys are amazing. I'm a student at Newport Harbor High School, I've been a student for four years, I'm a senior now, and I'm one of the founders of Prism. And I just want to say that my experience at Harbor has been absolutely amazing, and I'm so happy with all this inclusion that's going on. It's great, honestly, for all the LGBTQ students and just everyone. And there's been a lot of word recently from these just not cool people that we're harming the school, and I just want to say that's not true. All this inclusion is simply helping everyone, you know? It doesn't hurt anyone, it doesn't exclude anyone, it's just to make everyone feel loved. And I'm just super stoked with Bolton for helping this, Mr. Goodman, Ms. Gaylord, everyone. Everyone's fantastic. And thank you guys so much for all this. I hope that all this inclusion just keeps getting pushed forward, and we can do more to help our trans students, to help our queer students, just all the students, you know, any student. Thank you guys so much, I just only had that to say. Hope you guys have a lovely night. Thank you. Thank you.
We have Justin Shea, then Haley Jenkins, and then Alicia B.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Shea, I'd like to talk about the meeting, me and some other parents, out of Mr. Hall at Estancia, about the changing of the homecoming king and queen to the royals. He made this decision on his own immediately, was very confident in it, and was just very unacceptable of another opinion. And that these new rules will affect, with all the women up here, women negatively. I just had a baby girl, and I hope one day she can become homecoming queen, but she won't be able to do that in this district. And I think these new rule changes by Mr. Hall, without letting parents know, or a different opinion, opens up a big Pandora's Box. Because if we're talking about these rule changes, what happens with different ages or different races when a kid feels something different that day, you know? And talking to my son, there's not much bullying at the school, there's not much fighting, which is great, I don't think anybody's calling for that. I just think when rule changes are made for a small percentage of people with these students, I don't think it's setting them up right for real life. You know, I think all this coddling and rule changes, that doesn't happen in real life, and I don't think it's setting them up right for the real world where, you know, something's not going on right with their job, they can change a title, change whatever they want to make it happy for them. And I think if they're put to a vote for the total school, I think most of the kids would vote for the traditional way. And I just think we're kind of getting in a scary place when there's no discourse or way for another person to express their opinion to a principal that can just make changes like that. And I'd like to see something in writing where he can put his name on it, to where I can make rule changes like this, 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 to whatever tradition I want, to whatever bathroom I want, to whatever sport I want, you know? And I think all these rule changes are really going to be harmful to women in the end. So I'd just like you guys to make aware of that, that one of your principals is making decisions on his own, without differences of opinion, without parent input, or without student input, you know, really. The way he did the vote was they walked into the ASB and kind of forced these kids to vote on it without them knowing before, and him standing right in front of them. And I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's right. So I'd just like to bring that to your opinion, and thank you guys all for the time. Cheers.
Thank you. Next, we have Haley Jenkins and Alicia B.
Hello, Superintendent Smith, President Barto, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to request that you add a discussion action item to your next board meeting agenda. I'm requesting that you create a process in which the board reviews and approves all newer edition and updated versions of textbooks. Currently, the board approves a brand-new book, but updated versions of that same book never go through the same process. The board doesn't always look at them, and there's never a review period for parents and the public to review or make comments to you. Instead, these books just get signed off by teachers or principals that want them, and nobody knows what's in them. This is both dangerous and foolish. This is how the Comprehensive Health Skills for High Schools 2023 Edition came into our district. The health teacher from Costa Mesa High School wanted it, the prior version was previously approved back in 2018, so the school was able to sign up for 150 copies and a six-year online access subscription totaling $15,819. And it got okay despite being the approval form asking the question, "Does this publication include materials that are generally recognized as controversial?" It was marked "no." None of you saw this book or approved it, parents never saw this book. I found this months ago at the district office in my weekly textbook review and was appalled. Now you say, "We don't use this book," and you call my parent group liars. But it's weird that there is an approval and order form from Costa Mesa High School with the money, and the book is sitting in the office with the others. So maybe you weren't aware, just like parents and taxpayers weren't aware of the new approved edition, teaching kids about being gyno-romantic, or scolio-sexual, or how to be a gender-fluid pansexual, which in my opinion, doesn't really relate to health and shouldn't be taught at a public school. That's definitely not controversial, right? This is not the only concerning textbook with an updated version. I highly encourage you all, and anyone here in this room with children in the district, to come on down to the Sandborne offices here and browse through some of these books given to children. Some of them are awesome. However, after coming week after week looking through many of these, there's a noticeable trend starting somewhere around 2018, when factual textbooks take a nosedive, and the newer versions start peppering in controversial ideologies, and parents and the board are none the wiser. So please add this item to your next agenda. It's a simple change that will allow for transparency and help trust with the large portion of frustrated parents and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia B. And then Angelie.
Good evening, President Barto, Superintendent Smith, and board members. I stand before you as a mother, an educator, and taxpaying citizen. It is imperative to clearly convey our message of our duty to preserve and protect our schools and ultimately our children. Call that an extreme agenda, if you will, but I have dedicated over a decade servicing students with passion and care to ensure that schools meet their every need, to prove that I would love no more than to see our community thrive. Unfortunately, the communicative and actionable steps taken to advocate for our schools, children, and staff have failed due to your lack of partnership with community members. Since contracting with Capital Advisors Group LLC in April of this year, I have met with trustees, emailed, and stood at this very podium with a simple request in alignment with Board Policy 9322. My request for public knowledge was to adopt positions to solicit community input during public comment, and to establish a coordinated plan to carry out an advocacy agenda specific to SB 866, SB 1302, SB 1479, and AB 1940. So fortunately, three of these four bills were vetoed by the governor. Unfortunately, SB 1479 COVID-19 testing in schools was signed into law by the governor on September 29th. This is the very bill that President Barto stated privately had no infrastructure support and claimed to be personally opposed to, and prematurely celebrated that teachers were no longer required to test in this district. So imagine I am now in disbelief that there has been public deception for your fight related to COVID-19 and advocacy of students. You have done absolutely nothing with our taxpayer funds to attempt true influence that create COVID-19 testing plans or to adopt a state's framework. This bill has ongoing costs of potentially $1 billion, that's billion with a B, annually until January 1st, 2026, in order to continue the testing program, offer testing for teachers, students, staff, and surrounding community. And this is beyond the current expiration of federal funding. Even the Association of California School Administrators opposed this bill and stated that this bill would divert staff attention and limited funds away from students. AXA believes health directives need to be shifted back to public health agencies so that schools can focus on student education. So I'm here asking you, board and superintendent, why didn't you take the same stance as AXA? You had an opportunity, and you didn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Angelie.
Hi, good evening. My name is Angelie Andrade Vallarta, and thank you so much for the time today. I am a PTA parent at College Park Elementary. My daughter joined, first when she joined Kinder, and now in first grade. I'm learning more and more about the great work this team, our PTA is doing, and I just wanted some support and some clarity. As I'm looking at the itinerary of all the things that we want to fund, because we worked really, really hard on a very successful Jogathon fundraiser, on what is and is not covered as far as enrichment and supplemental curriculum activities for the kids. So for example, some of the things that we're looking to fund this year are things like a STEAM night, a single STEAM night, an all-school read, a literacy night, recess art for all grade levels to really provide kids some exposure, all of this, which looks like very educational. So I would really appreciate the opportunity to have some clarity on what is and what's not funded, so that the PTA can focus on more community outreach and connecting with families and kind of, you know, establishing a really healthy culture on our campus. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Right, now we move to superintendent's comments.
Yeah, with regard to the parent and Estancia, I'll follow up about the accusation that it was made unilaterally, and that the opinion of others wasn't respected, because we certainly want to respect the opinion of all on all of our campuses, so I'll follow up on that one. I wasn't there, so I can't clarify or comment on what happened during that meeting. SB and AXA support, AXA are actually their opposition. They pulled their opposition, as did the Ed Coalition, when all that was left after editing the bill was the requirement to have a plan, which we already have, not to implement the plan, not to hire staff, the investment plan, which it initially had, which would have cost lots and lots of money, the testing protocols, et cetera. What was left, as we understand it, and we can look into this again, I can bring back more information, was just the requirement to have a plan, which we already have. And then the PTA funding question was a great question. In fact, we were at Harbor Council PTA today, and brought this up, that we want to have Jeff and some of our team come and share, what is the district funds as a baseline? And then what are those things that PTA and foundations and PTOs and others can help support? We even had a trustee mention that we probably ought to focus too on our Title I PTAs in those schools, because in particular, they're struggling to find those resources. And so I couldn't agree more, and we're planning that for the very next Harbor Council meeting, and then other outreach to PTAs. And then just because he only stays as long as he has folks here to support, I made a comment last week, and he was gone. So I'm going to make that now, but Javier Zamorano, who's at the back of the room translating, this year was recognized as a 2022 Multilingual Award of Distinction for the entire county, so I wanted to recognize him while he's here.
Thank you. Now we move to-- Now we move to community input on agenda items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion-action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the Board if the speaker prefers.
Okay, we have one comment, Alicia B. Would you prefer to go now, or would you prefer to go with the consent? That's fine.
Okay, so this is in regards to Newport Harbor High School aquatic updates. On July 14th, the district sent out an email stating that the upgrades may include a remodel of locker rooms, restroom, showers, and coaches' office. The current language in the Board agenda states rehabilitating. I know that there's been some transactions via public record that we have obtained that covers language and changes language as to not sound the alarm within the community, and so I'm here seeking clarification as to the intentions of the district. Is it a rehabilitation? Is it a remodel? I know we've spoken, President Barto. I'm wondering what these plans entail. Perhaps that's coming after my comment. But in review of public records, we know that the district has been in contact with the state and has worked with the state on gender-neutral, multi-user restrooms, and has considered gender-neutral locker rooms. So I also wanted to inform the public that regardless of the plan approval, for those who may not be aware, the district has adopted a gender-support plan, so this permits any student to use any restroom or locker room, single or multi-user, based on their identity. And I've received numerous parent contacts, student contacts, teacher contacts that have informed us at both Newport Harbor and INSON do affirm children who identify as furries. I know that the district has denied this. We have photographs of this on campus. So members of the opposite sex who are using the facilities surrender their right to privacy with sexual orientation and gender identity. We're not asking for the district not to be inclusive, but to consider how this violates government transparency laws, principles of good governance, and most importantly, the public trust that parents have placed in public schools. School policy affects all of our students, and the family should not be in the dark about the policies and practices that you adopt. I know that our parent group has shared this with the community, and they have not been informed, so I continue to advocate that you work with parents and with full disclosure and transparency. So I look forward to hearing the aquatic updates. And again, with the topic of gender dysphoria, please engage your parents in these discussions. Thank you.[816.13][816.13][applause]
All right. We will get to 17A when we get to 17. We are currently on 16 informational items, update to Board policy numbers.
Yeah, this is routine, and that CSBA often changes the numbers, so what we have for you is just a list of those changed numbers. They didn't require any review by our committee, because it was just CSBA changing numbers.
Did anyone have any questions? Thank you. All right, with that, we move to 17 Consent Calendar. I know that there were some questions and shared by some trustees as well, so I guess I'll ask for a motion in a second and then discussion. Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, so items that trustees submitted, do you have any comments on those?
We shared all those in our update, so.
Oh.
Both of them for Jeff, though, so if trustees had questions that remain this evening and wanted to ask Jeff, he's prepared to address them.
So I did submit it, and I probably didn't get to my email in time, but I didn't see the answer for 17A2 as well regarding the concept, and I, it is my understanding that that concept has not yet been brought forth. Is that correct? Or can you clarify?
Once we get approval from the Board to proceed, then we will come to you with a picture visualization of what the concept will be like.
Trustee Metoyer.
Mine's a second, not on that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to thank staff, because of our change in when we were having our meeting, we usually submit our questions over the weekend, and that meant you guys had to scramble like crazy to answer our questions in hours rather than having the luxury of an entire day. Thank you so very much. I appreciate the efforts that you do.
Yes, thank you very much. I know I got my questions in a little bit later. Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Doing our questions that we sent. My question was on 17A1, and it was to follow up with previous times that I've asked the question about the order of things getting funded by foundations rather than the district, and what that process looks like, similar to, it sounds like, the Harbor Council conversation. And so I think just ongoing clarity as to the timing of things. I know four of the five schools in my area have asked for shade structures for quite a long time, so just that we have some discussion as to when things get approved. I know Mariners also needs one, but some of our other schools do, too. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, with that, I've seen no further questions. I'll go to roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoylu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay, so that we move to public hearing. 18A, Compliance with Requirements of Education Code Sections 60119 and 60422B, Sufficiency of Textbooks or Instructional Materials That Are Consistent with the Content and Cycles of the Curriculum Framework for 2022-2023 Williams Settlement Legislation. The hearing is now open at 6:55 PM. Are there any public comments? All right, seeing none. The hearing is now closed at 6:56 PM.
We actually had a minute go by this time. The clock switched.
I think maybe 30 seconds.
Probably, yeah.
All right, so moving to 19A, Approve Credential Waiver for a Certificated Employee. Ms. Olson.
Thank you very much. So this item of approving a credential waiver for one of our certificated employees is a standard item. This is to approve a waiver for one of our teachers to teach driver's education. This is an interesting situation in the fact that we do offer it, the state wants us to offer it. However, there is no programs currently, so we continue to look for a program so that they can become fully credentialed, but in absence of that, we ask the Board to approve the waiver.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, may I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Crane, and seconded by Trustee Metoyer. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Daniela Ramirez.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoylu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay, now we move to 20 and 20A, Adopt Resolution Number 081022, In Compliance with Requirements of Education Code Sections 60119 and 60422B, Sufficiency of Textbooks and Instructional Materials. Dr. Torres.
Hi, good evening. This item goes along with the public hearing that we had just a moment ago. This is a resolution just stating that the district will provide instructional materials in the four core subject areas in every space where there is learning. That's English, Math, Social Studies, and Science.
Thank you. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Wigan, seconded by Trustee Metoyer.
Trustee Barto.
Oh, I was going to ask any questions. Any discussion? Thank you. Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoylu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay, now we move to 20B, Adopt Resolution Number 071022, Withdrawal Membership in Schools Excess Liability Fund Joint Powers Authority. Mr. Trader.
The district carries excess insurance, and that has been provided for years by SELF. That would be the Schools Excess Liability Fund. That's a JPA, Joint Powers Authority. And we've looked at the cost of that and have decided that it'd be more cost-effective to move to SAFER, which is another organization that prides excess liability insurance, and we figure we can save about $140,000 a year on that, and so we recommend approval of this motion to exit SELF.
May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Wigan, and seconded by Trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoylu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay, with that, we move to informal reports.
So, great week last week, meeting with our advisory councils. We have parents, certificated, classified, and management, and at each of them, the number-one conversation was an update on the School Safety Task Force. So of course, we're bringing that work back to you, so we can do that here publicly. But a couple of the highlights that they were excited to hear, that the group has aligned all schools on the same protocol. So we have one protocol that is age-appropriate for the grade levels at each of our 33 sites, 32 physical sites, that they're looking at training and identifying that day in November, probably, when they can do training for all staff, because it's one thing to have it, something to know how to use it, so that's exciting. They've made some inroads on securing front offices, like many districts around the state have, a buzz-in video concept, because we'll have our gates and our fences securing campuses, but the offices are often open, so they've identified that as one of those first areas that they can make great improvement this school year. The deployment, or first-round deployment of cameras, using cameras around the district to provide greater security, and then an emergency device, a sentegix device, that isn't Wi-Fi bound, that allows anyone on campus to notify folks that something is happening, there's an emergency. It could be any emergency, kind of like shock, whatever. We all read the report of Uvalde, I'm sure, and there was that employee out in the field that saw the person climbing the fence, had to go find a phone, called it in. It took them three minutes to respond. We know what happened. If these are successful, any employee on campus, even someone visiting the campus from like the district warehouse, transportation, et cetera, would hit that button and notify everyone on campus that something is awry, based on how many times they do it. So we're excited about their efforts there, and that committee will be bringing that back to you. We had our SRO welcome this week. It was awesome. End of last week, because it's Monday. It was a great seeing our SROs and hearing more about them. We lost one of our Costa Mesa SROs. I like to say he was demoted, because he got some other assignment. There's no better assignment than working with our folks in public education, our amazing students, many of whom are here tonight representing. But we'll get another one, because that's a priority of this Board and their support of local law enforcement. And then Saturday, I had a chance to do some volunteer work with the Newport Chamber of Commerce. I helped build the sandcastle at Newport State Beach. Actually, I just shoveled, but my wife, who showed up, was more of an artist. They let her actually sculpt a VW bus, which was awesome, and then went over to the Newport L Classic Car Show. It was just cool to be out there with our community members, and a member of the community there, the one that remained anonymous, said they would double whatever was brought in that day, because they enjoyed the event so much. Anyway, those are my reports.
Thank you. You know, we never start in the middle, so Trustee Ursoylu, would you like to go first?
I will give people their life back and move to the next person.
Go to Trustee Anderson.
Thank you very much for the cameras. I know several of us have eagerly awaited having cameras on some of our campuses as a first step of safety, particularly for the offices, so thank you for doing that. I am looking forward to Walk to School Day on the 5th. I am similarly to Back to School Night, going to try and go to two different sites. So that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Me next, okay? I'm really happy to hear that there'll be some articulation and common purpose when it comes to enrichment classes, so I love the collaboration of Harbor Council PTA with the district. That's a great first step, moving in the right direction and offering all of our campuses enrichment opportunities, so I loved hearing that. Let's keep that going. I also love looking into the audience and seeing a lot of students. Sounds like Mesa is in the house. Yeah? Okay? And we are going, I'm attending SOI, is having an open house on October 5th, and I know that several trustees and superintends are going to visit SOI, which is a great nonprofit partner with us. Walk to School Day, yes, for sure. We love Walk to School Day, and believe President Barto and I are going to Ray and Pomona's Walk to School, so we look forward to that. And of course, it's CDM's Jubilee on October 22nd, which is going to be an amazing day full of celebration of CDM and dedication of a track, and then an English Beat concert. Can't wait. Go 80s. Woo! And just overall, thank you for all our hard-working staff and teachers and those who are brave to come up and speak. You know what? This is a free country. A First Amendment right is so important, so we welcome all expression of speech. So thank you all for coming up to the podium and sharing your opinions. Thank you.
Walk to School Day is fun. It's wonderful. I'm hoping to do one on one day and one on the other in our zone, so that'll be great. On September 23rd, I was joined by Trustee Anderson, Trustee Wigan, and Trustee Crane, and Superintendent Smith at the City of Costa Mesa State of the City Luncheon, which is, both cities do a wonderful job celebrating their cities, which is great. However, we received a certificate of recognition for, we actually had over 50 years of service. On behalf of the City of Costa Mesa, it is an honor to extend our sincere congratulations. For more than 50 years of service in Costa Mesa, we commend you for your enduring commitment to our city and tremendous value added to the greater Costa Mesa community. We wish you continued success. We got a nice little stand-up award that gets to join all the other accolades that we have, but it's very heartwarming to have, to be recognized by the city of all the good work we do, because we know all the good work we do, and so did most of the people here tonight have noticed all the good work we do. So thank you very much.
I'm going to go, let's see. Trustee Wigan.
Definitely would pick you for doing that.
Because if you don't look at the teacher, they don't call on you. Is that what it is?
No, the thing is to look down at your desk.
Don't make eye contact.
Well, I just want to say, you know, over the past couple weeks, I was able to speak at Kaiser Woodland PFO meeting and the Mariners' PTA meeting, and it was great to meet parents and talk to them a little bit about what the district's doing, a little bit about some of our initiatives, and hearing their concerns and answering questions that they have. A lot of their concerns revolved around safety and security, and we actually had one parent at the Kaiser Woodland PFO that is on our security task force, and she did a remarkable job standing up and singing the benefits of that task force, and I, you know, said thank you so much for her support, and she said, "I'm just really proud of what the district is doing and how much effort we're putting into these task forces." So that was great. And, you know, we were able to talk, have a lively discussion about things that do happen at our board meetings, and explain, you know, a little bit about what's going on there in the community, and answer any questions anyone has about things that come up on the agenda. Another thing I was able to do is, I think one speaker talked about the Newport Harbor Alumni Tailgate thus past Friday, and that was a great event. I got to go and meet all of those great sailors that have been part of this school and this community since the '50s, since, you know, inception really of the school, and it was really humbling to see how many people love this community, want to come back and give back towards the community, and it was great. One, two, one teacher got up and played the One, two, one teacher got up and played the guitar with the alumni all-star band of Harbor. And the kid that, a student that introduced him was, he said, and this is my science teacher, Oscar Constante. And so it was great to see a student get up and talk about his teacher that is also an alumni and playing the alumni band. So it's such a great community around. And it was just a wonderful night. The game was was hard, but you know, the tailgate was great. Yes. And then another thing, we do have the Community Forum on Bike Safety tomorrow at Ensign. So that'll be a big one. Come, come one, come all. It's a very important topic right now.
Thank you for saying something about the football game. Mesa won homecoming this year. Yay, Mustangs! See, Mustangs are in the house. Thank you, Mrs. Yelsey.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a few fun things, and then I have a request of Superintendent Smith. Two just unique things that happened last week. I was at Harborview's Flag Deck for their celebration of their Read-a-Thon. Now, I know all the schools have Read-a-Thons, but these kids read 91,000 minutes. That's how they gauge what they do. And they raised $64,000 for their Read-a-Thon. And so they celebrated not only the Read-a-Thon, but it was the principal's birthday on Friday. And they had a, they could slime the principals. So they used slime all over Principal Del Real. The kids had an awesome time. Parents, everybody in the community was there just to celebrate what they've been doing in the fall. The other thing was CDM had their fall music concert Friday night. And it is my favorite concert of the year because they have all 13 of their vocal, instrumental, and band performers in the gym. And it's kind of run like a three-ring circus. So they have all 13 of those groups perform in an hour and 20 minutes. And it was pretty amazing. And the support they got from just the other people who were not performing was like being at a football event, or even more so. They were so excited about each group presenting. So it was really nice. Good way to start the weekend. And then I'd like to request Dr. Smith to look into something for us. I know we have a lot of board policies. We have board policies for everything. But there's something that we don't have a board policy that I feel that I'd like you to look into to see the feasibility of doing this. I don't want to micromanage our schools, but parents expect responsible oversight from all of us. And some things happen that we cannot weigh in on. And oversight is is an essential part of a responsible board. So as elected representatives of the community, I think we should have a say on issues that reflect on the school community. So I'm I'm requesting a discussion along those lines that, and this is just my words, but I'd like some both legal, other involvement that you may know about, talking to CSBA or other areas. Any site decision made at an individual school by administration, ASB clubs, or other bodies shall, upon the sole discretion of the Newport Mesa Board, be reviewable and by simple majority vote, shall be subject to amendment, revision, or revocation. And I say that because we quite often hear things and we say, well, we have no control over that. And as a board, we should have ultimate say over what happens in our district. I don't think it would be used very much. I think it would be probably minimal, but I think we should have that option. So I'd like a discussion among, at a, at a future board meeting, have a discussion if it's feasible, if we could possibly do this.
Understood.
Thank you. All right, so this week I was really pleased to be asked to speak at the Assistance League of Newport Mesa. They do so much good work for our community. And so many of the students are great leaders and student leaders, and they help their fellow students. It's a wonderful and amazing partnership that we have, and it was honored that they asked me to speak. The topic was positive leadership among students on campus. And it was really inspiring for me to see how a lot of our students have a really good understanding of how to bring that positive environment. I don't know that I taught them anything at the end, but I really did appreciate hearing from them and hearing how they are trying to create a positive environment on all of their campuses in partnership with with Newport Mesa and with the community. On that note, I attended the Newport Harbor High football game. Was lucky enough to attend the Newport Harbor High Back to School Night as a parent, not in my board clothes. And a few, very few people recognized me. So it was nice just to be able to go as a mom and listen to all the things that were happening from a parent perspective. I really appreciated that. But the thing that I found most wonderful in all of that is everywhere you went, people said the back to school, the back to school nights, all the things, the joy that they have seen and the school spirit. Definitely Newport Harbor has amazing school spirit. But at all of our school sites, the amount of joy coming from the teachers, from the parent volunteers who are on campus, from the students, from the staff. There's a lot of joy and a lot of really positive things going on in our community. And I think that 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 joy is contagious. So I was honored to walk and experience all of that. And then finally, on the note of safety, wanted to talk about, Trustee Crane and I, along with Trustee Metoyer, sometimes, have started a group called Community Alliance for Bike Safety. We've had about three or four meetings to this point. We've been working on it for about a year to address some of the issues that we see with, it started out with e-bikes, but it's really with bikes and traffic in general, getting to school, routes to school. We, it's really wonderful to see how some of the school sites have taken that and run with it. Ensign, for example, has implemented a bike safety training as part of their PE class. And so every seventh and eighth grader was given a bike safety training by the Newport Beach Police Department, after which they were given a test. And if they passed that test with 80% or above, they were given a sticker that showed that they were a safe commuter to school. So there's been a lot of wonderful things that have kind of come organically from that. Our group serves more as a connector. And so through that, we've been able to see a lot of good work that different groups in the community have done. I met with a bunch of parents at the corner of Irvine and. But it was great because it's important to talk through what those issues are.
Did you have a helmet on?
I was standing. But it, but it's good because I think that the more we have these discussions, because they are ultimately community partnerships, they're agreements that we make with the community as drivers and as new drivers around Newport Harbor, there's a lot of collaboration that's going to go into making areas of our community safe. And there's a few, especially around the, where you have an elementary school and a high school in close proximity, where you have a lot of those issues, as we have more people than ever, I think, on the road and getting, kids getting themselves to school, particularly with with e-bikes. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of the teachers and staff and parents and community and people who truly love our Newport Mesa schools. I think that so many of us have recognized how important they've been to members of our family, generationally, grandparents, parents, what it's been, what it's meant for us as a community, even those who I know in my own life who maybe are sending their kids to other schools for various reasons. They love our Newport Mesa schools and they're pleased to support them because of the impact that it has on the community at large. So that's been really wonderful to experience as well. Thank you.
And with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting at 7:17. All right.